So I think we're ready to go if we've got our, if the cameras are working tonight. They don't always. There we go. Good evening. Welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, May 6, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Can I get a motion for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, April 22, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors that we need to correct before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so that must be good. I will call for the vote. Thank you. Count my numbers, make sure that's everybody. That's six. Thank you. And a motion for the adoption of the agenda. We did have one additional item. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move the council adopt the agendas presented with the addition of item 8.3, aquitara appointments.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We don't require you to let us know ahead of time. We certainly do appreciate it. And it looks like we may have a couple of delegations. We did have one that let us know ahead in advance, and I have on our agenda the Bear Creek Folk Festival. Let's see, one of their representatives here. If you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself. We invite our delegations to give us presentations of a vote, no more than five minutes. We'll have an opportunity for questions at the end from council, and we just ask you to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Gordy. I'm the president of the Bear Creek Folk Festival Society and also the assistant producer. Sarah would be here, but she's on an airplane right now flying to Edmonton and was delayed getting out of Newfoundland, so she couldn't make it. So really, I'm here to provide a brief update about our 2019 festival, our fourth festival, and also speak to the ask that we have in front of council for the major tourism grant. First off, our 2019 festival is looking to be a pretty exciting event. We've already announced our full lineup, which includes headliners of Feist, Blue Rodeo, Crash Test Dummies, Alan Doyle, Dan Mangan, Ruthie Foster, so some really exciting new artists, and then some pretty exciting returning artists as well. We have some local bands performing, Brad Lynch Band, Jordan Leaf, and Kaylee Cardinal, who's from here but probably more in Edmonton now. Ticket sales are going really strong. Actually, our weekend passes. So we just opened sales to our day tickets, but our weekend tickets are at where they were on the Friday of our festival last year. So that's a pretty exciting advancement to how well sales are going. Our volunteer numbers, they're double where they were this time last year. Already, we have 31 different towns represented outside of Grand Prairie. And we're happy to say that we have volunteers coming all the way from Southern Alberta, Vancouver, Ontario, and we actually have a volunteer coming from Hawaii just to come to this event. We're also really happy that we were this year nominated and actually won the Alberta Business Award for Community Attraction. That was presented by the Alberta Chambers of Commerce. That was a very nice recognition and also a testament to the hard work that our Folk Fest community and the city of Grand Prairie puts into this event. We are still focused on growing our event. We've recently added, last year, we added a free Thursday night concert in downtown in conjunction with the Downtown Association and Better Than Friends. We're continuing that again this year, so it's a way for the community to come together, preview some of our artists at the event, but as well as catch some artists that are not going to be at the festival, but showcase some local Grand Prairie talent. This, that event specifically is not part of our Folk Fest ask. That is just something that we've started to grow on our own because we think it's important to get the community vibe spread even further into, into the, the community. We're quite excited. One of the big things that might not register locally, but the buzz that is around this event outside of the region. That's not only in the music industry. I wish Sarah was here to be able to talk to this, but she's had people, when she, she visited England this year, to look at new artists. And there were artists in England that knew of Grand Prairie's Folk Fest. They knew of our lineups. They wanted to play here. That extends to fans as well. We are on the, on the map in terms of Folk Fests. So there are, there are people out there that are now excited to come to Grand Prairie for its musical culture. So to our ask, we're asking for $87,500 of the major tourism grant. This is down from our $100,000 ask that we successfully received last year. A couple of things that have happened since then, this last year, our third festival, we brought in a deficit of just over 1%, which is a far improvement from our previous years. So we're, we're very happy that our deficit has all but gone away. We are still carrying debt, and we're looking to pay that down as we, as we're growing. But it is, it's nice to see that our trajectories are heading in the right direction. That said, we are asking for a reduced amount, but the full amount is still very important to us. It's critical at, at this juncture where we are, we are about to, to pass that running a deficit and hopefully running a profit. So we, our goal is to be able to stand on our own. Our goal is to be able to hopefully not require the assistance as much. We would still like the city in the future to want to help assist us. But at this point, we are still, we are still very much in need of this kind of support. So we, we are hoping that the full amount will be awarded. Just as a side note, we've mentioned it before, but as an example, the Edmonton Folk Fest, they're going into their 40th year, and their city still contributes a significant amount of money to their event. The city of Grand Prairie's help has been instrumental in getting this Folk Fest off the ground. There's quite a history of, of our asks in the past, but we feel like we are at a place where we are becoming a fabric of the city, especially the, the summer. We're very proud of the community that we have created around our event. We're very proud of what we feel we are giving back to the city in terms of culture and economic benefit. And we hope, hope that can continue this year. So I, I welcome any questions. I'll try my best to answer. Sarah would probably be the better person to answer some questions, but I'll, I'll tell you, if I don't know something, I'll try to be as transparent as I can.
Thanks very much, Mr. Haxette. Any questions for Mr. Haxette? Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, well, congratulations on being here for the third year.
Fourth.
Fourth year.
Yeah.
So how much money has the city put in to support in the last four years or three years?
The last two years, we have been successful at receiving the major tourism grant, if I'm not mistaken, and they were for $100,000. The previous year, so our inaugural year, we approached the city council for, I believe, a $50,000 ask prior to the event. We were awarded $10,000, and then following the event, we came back and asked for, I think we were awarded 50 at that time.
You're telling me $260,000?
I would, I think so, yeah. And that's, again, to the best of my recollection.
Okay, that's all good. So you're bored. I'm just, I've had a lot of phone calls in the last couple of weeks regarding the Folk Festival and funding sources and anybody that applies for it. And one of the reasons is there's people that are homeless in town, and they would rather see money go
Sure, yeah.
the other way, so please don't judge me. It's the public. Is the board paid? Any, any money going towards the bait?
No, no, and I'm, even as an assistant producer, I'm a volunteer.
Okay.
So we have one full-time paid staff, and that's Sarah. We traditionally have had one seasonal staff, and that was our volunteer manager, who was Laura, and she was paid in that capacity even while she was a board member. She stepped down two, excuse me, two years ago. This year, we actually do not have a paid volunteer manager position. We're spreading that out across multiple volunteers. So yeah, no one on the board has been paid.
And just one more. How many businesses from Grand Prairie do, does this Folk Festival support versus ones from out of town?
We get over 80 sponsors to our event that are local. Some of those sponsors are gift and kind. Whenever possible, we will, we will contract services with local vendors. So that is as much food we get locally we can. There are purchases that we have to make at, like through Cisco. But we are very proud that we've been able to source a lot of our meat and produce locally. Our, for example, our fencing, our toilets, those are all local vendors. In fact, I think we tapped out Honey Bucket for all of the toilets last, last year, and we will need more toilets this year based on our numbers. The contractors that we have to get outside of Grand Prairie would be our staging. Now, our staging for the Thursday event, we get locally, be, through Heartbeat, because they, you know, they can handle that, that event very well, and we're very happy with them. For the size of our main stages, our main stage and our day stages, the, the company that can handle that and the closest one to us is All-Star, who, who does do that.
And is there any gift and kind from the city besides the ask that you're doing tonight?
The venue itself, I would say, would be a gift and kind. Transit. They have allowed festival weekend pass holders and volunteers who are wearing the weekend wristband to ride to the site for free. Outside of that, I'm sure there are other, other things, but those would, would be the major things that I'm aware of.
So do you have any, would you have a value on that yourself?
Of?
The gift and kind?
Um, yeah, I'm sure there would be a value. I don't know the value of that, though.
You don't have a perceived value of that gift and kind yourself?
Dollar-wise, no, I don't, yeah.
Fine. Thank you very much for asking those, or answering those tough questions.
Sure.
Got to do my job too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Last year was my first opportunity to attend the event. I had just been out of town the previous summers, and I was really impressed by it. I was impressed by seeing the community have a good time. I was impressed by the table full of people that I met in the beer gardens, who they came from, one of them came from Edmonton during the first year, and then he had a van full of people from Edmonton who had only been in Grand Prairie for this event. So I want to thank you and all the other people that have put in a lot of volunteer hours for this event. Something curious about is looking at ticket prices. I think the prices you guys said are fair, but they're still very expensive for some families.
Sure.
So what are some of the opportunities that are available to citizens of Grand Prairie to attend this event without a cash contribution?
Uh, the, sorry, the number one way that anyone can attend is by volunteering. Kids under 12 are free, which is something that we have traditionally put as children under 12 free, courtesy of the city of Grand Prairie, for this major tourism grant. But we have a number of people that attend the event that could not be able to afford it simply by volunteering. So we ask for a bit of time, and they get the entire weekend free. They actually also get meals Saturday lunch and dinner, Sunday lunch and dinner. They also get an after-party with exclusive bands playing, well, bands playing exclusively for them. They get their shirt, and then they also just get the, the community vibe. This last year, we handed out, I believe, 300 tickets to local women's and children's shelters. And we're looking at expanding that to about 500 this year. Basically, the idea is we don't want anyone not to be able to attend. If the price is, is out of someone's budget, they can volunteer, and we're, we encourage that. Like, we, we don't, we don't want to be known as an event that people can't attend. And we're always looking for volunteers. And another thing we're quite proud of is how accessible we've made the event for volunteers and attendees. We, we have a number of volunteers that have varying disabilities, and we accommodate that and encourage them to volunteer as well.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming tonight. Just a couple of questions. With ticket sales ahead of your sort of targets at this point, can you tell me how your corporate sponsorship levels are compared to prior years?
They're, they're the same. They're on track to be the, the same, if not better. This is weekend pass tickets. Last year, we had a significant number of day sales, specifically on our Saturday, where City in Color and Emerson Drive are playing. We do project something similar this year, because Saturday is Crash Test Dummies and Feist, which will be a, likely a very big draw. We just put our day passes on sale about a week ago. So we, we don't have that projection yet, but weekend passes, total weekend pass sales have, will, I, I don't see how they wouldn't exceed what we did last year.
And last year was the first year I was able to attend, and I think you guys run a great event.
Well, thank you.
So, you know, congratulations again for the work that you put into that. My question is more about the what-if. So if council tonight doesn't fund you to the levels, and you're still currently paying off prior debt, what does that look like for the future of the event? And, and, you know, given that you're seeing an incline, or an increase, rather, in ticket sales to date on your weekend passes, corporate sponsorship appears to be on par or possibly more. Where's the give and take if, if council were to find, were to provide less sponsorship tonight?
You, you know, we're, we're at a point where we're, it, it feels like we're ready to cross over that big, big hurdle. That would make that hurdle much harder to cross without, without the help of, of the city. So I would say that's, that's the big thing. Like, we've, we've taken major steps forward. I think from our first year, we learned a lot of lessons. We tried in year two to reduce our artistic budget, and that had direct result, negative results towards our ticket sales. Our third year, we went the other direction and actually increased our artistic budget, and it showed by massive increase of ticket sales as well as onsite sales. More people onsite, there's more people buying merchandise and in the beer garden and buying food and things like that. So it, it would be a struggle if, if council didn't fund the whole amount, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue. And that being the case, thanks very much, Mr. Haxette, for being this evening.
Just a plug, come to Real Shorts. It's on this week. There's a couple of good movies playing.
You know, you, you've seen some good movies lately, haven't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Made some good movies lately, have you?
Maybe.
Thanks very much, Gordy. Okay. We're still in the delegation portion of our agenda. If there was anybody else that wished to come forward and make presentation to council, now would be the opportunity. This does exist at every regular city council meeting, as I said, and if anybody wishes to, obviously, it's just one of the ways that you can get in front of council. We're all out in the coffee shops and in the grocery stores and on Facebook and on lots of other different social media channels. I don't see anybody else rushing the sage, and so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on. We have no public hearings this evening or unfinished business, and so that takes us to item 8.1. With the amended schedule of council and committee meetings for 2019, I would look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Thiessen?
I guess I made this motion last council meeting, so I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-962V, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So no discussion and debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
I think, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw C-962V, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Is, was there anybody from administration that was prepared to speak to this? It just might be worthwhile. If not, maybe either Counselor Thiessen or I can give a little bit of an introduction about what the amendment to the procedure bylaw will actually do. I see Ms. Walker being the fastest to her microphone. Ms. Walker? And you'll, it looks like you're fastest, but you didn't actually get it turned. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the amendment to the bylaw basically says that council meetings will be held Mondays starting at 3:00, and committee business will be conducted during that, that period of time. There would be a recess, and then the regular meeting of council would commence, and that would entail public hearings and, just a second. Geez, I was doing so well with that. Public hearings and delegations and public hearings, yes.
Okay. And I believe it also proposes a change to the schedule of committee meetings as well.
It does. It combines committee meetings into one day, starting on Tuesdays, every other Tuesday from the council meeting. And all of the committee meetings would be conducted during that day.
Thanks very much. Thanks for stepping in on that, Ms. Walker. Open for discussion and debate, Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna have a comment in a minute, but I just want to clarify. My understanding is that the bylaw changes city council meetings, and that we need another motion to amend the committee meeting schedule. So my understanding is if I want council meetings to stay how they are, then I'd have to persuade council to defeat this bylaw. But if that happens, we'd still have the opportunity to change committee meetings. Could I just check to make sure?
Yeah, that's correct. If you look in the recommendation or report, we have the three readings of the procedure bylaw, which is changing the schedule of council, the Monday night meetings. And then there is a motion attached there as well to approve the amended schedule for council and standing committees up until our next organizational meeting. Correct?
Great. Well, then, if I may?
Absolutely.
Well, in that case, I will be voting against this motion. I do support, and when we get to it, I do support changing committees around. I can't support this change of council, and I think there's two reasons for it. I think one is for the impact it has on council and future councils, and one is for the impact it has on our community. In terms of the impact on councillors, it's, council is classified as a .7 job. I don't know about others, but if I sterilize my afternoon by being in a meeting, that makes my life harder when I pick up extra work. And I can deal with that, but an even bigger concern to me is as we get into future elections, I want as many quality candidates as possible step up. And I'm nervous if we say that they have to give up not just an evening, but also an afternoon for council, and it's still classified as a part-time job. That makes it more difficult for people to step up and do this job. And I think that giving less ability to access this job gives voters less opportunity to elect a great council. And so that's one reason I'll be voting against this. The other reason is that public engagement and public opportunity to give feedback to council is a fundamental value of mine. And I really like that our council meetings are in the evening, because it allows the public to come speak to us. Right now, we just heard a delegation that talked about committee business. Well, if we change this, if we change the time we meet, committee business would happen in the afternoon. And we have that delegation who came, spoke to us. I see some other people in the gallery who are here on committee business. Those people would have to come in the afternoon during a weekday to be part of that conversation of anything coming out of committee. And I think for a lot of people, that makes it hard to access us. For that reason, I think council meetings should stay in the evening, so I hope that council will defeat this bylaw change.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody. I'll express my opinion. First off, this makes me, as a person who's been on this schedule for nearly 19 years, this makes me really, really uncomfortable, and I also see that as a good reason to try it. I think any system that hasn't seen any change over the course of 19 years, where things like social media have come on as a new way for residents to contact council about new issues, electronic communication like emails, were not something that was there when really the expectation was that you either had to phone city council members, write us a letter, or see us physically somewhere. And my experience of doing this job today is that it's very, very different. There are a lot more different channels. And so I'm, I'm open to trying this, even though it makes me uncomfortable. I'd like to see how it works. And I'm completely comfortable with changing back if we find that it is either unworkable for council members in terms of time commitment or that the amount of community input is reduced, then we change it back. I don't think there's any reason to stay in a system without trying something different. And when we try something different, we have an opportunity to, to learn what works and what doesn't. And if this doesn't work, then let's go back to the tried and true that does work. So I would encourage council to support the change, and let's assess it and see how, see how it works out for us. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just have a question for administration, just to maybe jog my memory. I, I think, so we're gonna have a meeting at 3:00 on the Mondays of council now, but we're still gonna be meeting, I think, as council at 6:30. So is the intent to do some of the business and, and then come back at 6:30, or kind of how is that business gonna be reallocated? Just so I have an understanding better.
Ms. Walker, you were the first one to speak. Now you're, now you're stuck with it.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So my understanding is that in, at 3:00, the council would be dealing with business coming out of the committee meeting. And then at 6:00, council would begin their regular scheduled council meeting that would allow for a delegation and for public hearings. Did that answer your question?
So delegations could still come in the evening then?
Exactly, yes.
So, so I, I'm kind of in agreeance with Mayor Given on this one. I think it's worth trying. I think that there's an opportunity here that administration had presented this to us, because I'm assuming or hoping that there's gonna be a little bit, this is a little bit better fit for administration than typically the community. And if the community still has an opportunity to come and speak as a delegation later in the evening, I, I think it's achievable. And, and like Mayor Given stated, I'm, I'm fine with trying this for a bit. If it doesn't work, we can try it differently. But if this has been the process for 19 years and administration suggested something different, I'm, I'm game for trying it. So I wouldn't be able to support your motion, Counselor Bressi.
Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Another question for administration. Can you jog my memory? I know we discussed this, but I can't recall. For example, if, if something hit a committee level at, on, I'm just looking at the calendar, September 3, and the next council meeting was September 9, can that item make the council agenda by the 9th, or does it have to make weight to council meetings?
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. My understanding is that items that come out of a committee meeting would go to the next scheduled council meeting.
So potentially six days later.
Yes.
Thank you.
See, Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it is just, just worth, maybe I'm misunderstanding things, but I think just to clarify, if somebody wants to come speak to us, and they can only come speak to us in the evenings, they've got a nine-to-five job, yes, they're, under this new schedule, are allowed to come in the evening, but we would have already dealt with any committee business, and most of our business comes through committee. So it's, I think it's, to me, it doesn't hold water. it's, to me, it doesn't hold water. Say, yeah, you can come talk to us after we've made a decision, and either pat us on the back or tell us why the decision we made three hours ago was a bad decision. So I don't think that, I don't think that having delegations in the evening after we've dealt with committee business really counts as giving them opportunity to give us evening feedback. They'd have to skip work if they work a 9-to-5 job and come talk to us in the afternoon if they want to talk about most items of business that we have. And again, today at council, we're gonna be spending most of our time dealing with committee business that we just heard a delegation from and other people in the room here from committee business.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I will not be supporting the motion that was just made. I think I mean...
So, okay, let's just be really clear. I think we got, might have got a little crossed up there. Counsel Thiessen has made a motion for second reading?
Yeah.
That's the only motion.
Okay.
Counsel Bressi was speaking against it.
Okay.
So there's no amendment, there's no, yeah, just so we're clear.
So I will be supporting the motion that was read. It was administration that brought this to us. They said it was gonna be a cost-saving and be quicker in response to some of the services that we can do with having the meetings in a more timely manner. And so that's two reasons why I would like to support this. We give administration the task to save money, and I'd just like to see what happens. When it comes to October, when we do our changes, if this doesn't work out, then I think that we've tried it. And with that, we either go with it again, or we change it again. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Another point of clarification. In the segment one of, so question for administration, Ms. Walker, in the segment one at 3:00 PM, it'll be conducted more of a committee-type process, where delegations will have an opportunity to come speak. However, no council, no decision will be final till it goes to council. So at 6:00 PM, which is the segment two, so at that point, if there was a delegation that didn't have an opportunity to come to speak to the committee format of it, they would still have an opportunity to speak at the delegation format, which is prior to any formal council decision. So it's more of a yes, not if I'm correct, and also a clarification.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If I understand the intention correctly, it, segment one and segment two are both part of a regular council meeting. It's just that some business of council will be conducted in segment one. So approving the recommendations that come from committee, the Tuesday committee meetings, would be approved during segment one of the council meeting. And then there would be a recess to allow for a dinner break, and then segment two would begin at 6:00 PM, and that's where delegations and public hearings would take place.
Yeah, so there really are, if a person wanted to speak to an item that had come through the committee process the week prior, they would need to show up and speak to that in segment one, in the 3:00 PM time. They would have an opportunity. There is a delegation portion of that agenda. There is also a, I guess, in segment two, I guess you could call it a general delegation portion, if somebody just wanted to come and talk to council about any other issue. But Counsel Bressi is correct. If somebody wanted to show up at the council meeting before we decided on a recommendation from committee, the time to do that would be in segment one.
Okay, so then, can you clarify for me how it's gonna affect the process of the committee level meeting? Will there not be as much opportunity for discussion? Is it gonna be a council committee of the whole, is on the committee meeting on Tuesday now, or will there still be opportunity for people to speak in, you know, in support or in opposition to things?
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So committee meetings would still be conducted as they normally are. However, we would be conducting all of those committee meetings, one right after each other on every other Tuesday.
And so I think, Counsel Clayton, to your question, if there was a member of the public that wanted to speak to an item that was showing up on a committee agenda, they could, as they can today, show up again during the day, but during that committee time to speak to it when it's first heard by council. And if they so chose, they could attend the segment one of the council meeting the following week. So there, I think Counsel Bressi is correct, that the, to speak to committee business would be more during the day, and there wouldn't be the evening opportunity like we have. And as we saw, you know, with Mr. Hackshead's presentation, it was specific to something that was dealt with at committee last week, where a representative's organization was there as well. And so that exact opportunity that we had tonight wouldn't exist in quite the same way.
So if I may, just, so I'll be voting in support of this. I feel that for a few reasons, there continues to be many opportunities for public to one-on-one meet with council, go to committee meetings, potentially go to segment one. And then with the addition of segment two, there's a longer process of opportunity for people to consult with council. The other piece for me is that we're not the only municipality that does it this way, though albeit that we've done it one way for many, many years. There are people in our region that are used to it happening another way as well. So it's not like we're adopting a process that's completely unusual. The biggest piece for me, though, is the flex, the adaptability and sort of the responsiveness that we can turn things around to get to a council meeting in six days. We, for many years, have not been nimble in this, and in my opinion, if something can go from committee level to a council meeting in six days, that shows great nimbleness. And it really is what the community is looking for from our administration, as well as from council. So I think it's a great move. Thanks.
I will, I see Counsel Bressi in the queue, and we should get towards voting, because I'm not seeing, I'm seeing the same names coming up in the queue often. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you. Question for Counsel Clayton or administration. Maybe I'm missing something. I really hear you on talking about nimbleness, and that's something I really agree with, and that's why I do plan to support the changed committee agendas. That being said, I don't understand why whether we have council meetings start at 3:00 or 6:00 PM helps with that nimbleness. So am I missing something?
Yeah, I think Counsel Clayton is saying it's the committee schedule is actually the part that she was referencing as the nimbleness, and certainly they are. We will vote on them separately, yeah.
That's right. So Counsel Clayton, that is why, in a little bit, I do plan to support the change to the council committee. That being said, I'd encourage you to consider defeating this bylaw to change the meeting time of actual council meeting to 3:00 PM. So I think that we keep that nimbleness by changing the committee schedule. We don't need to pass this bylaw to get that nimbleness, which is very important.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we will move to the vote on second reading. There were no amendments, so it is second reading as proposed by Counsel Thiessen. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. So this is a motion to have third and final reading of this proposed change at this meeting. Should this motion to have third and final reading not pass unanimously, then third and final reading would come back at our next council meeting. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? I don't see anybody in the queue. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-962V, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much. Open for discussion and debate on third and final reading. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Something else that I'd like to draw council attention to is both the demographics of our council and the demographics of the candidates in the last election. And that is, I think we've got a very good council. I think we've got a very strong council. I don't know if it's necessarily very representative of our city. And I think that's because there weren't candidates that were representative of our city last election. Last election, out of 19 people, I was the second youngest candidate. There was one candidate who was nine months younger than me. Everybody else was older than me by at least a few years. At the time of the election, I was older than the median age of Grand Prairie. So almost everybody that ran was well above the median age of Grand Prairie. And also, doing a tally, the majority of the candidates that ran in the last election were either business owners or retired. Again, I think there were very quality candidates. I think the voters elected quality candidates. That being said, the candidates were all above the median age, and the majority were business owners or retired. That is not representative of our community. And I think that's because this is an awkward job in terms of it's a part-time job. It's also very demanding of your schedule. And there's a lot of people that are earlier in their careers who just can't possibly make that work. And I think making this change, we're making that even harder for them to make this work. And so for the sake of make sure we have future councils that are as quality as this one, but hopefully even more representative in this one, I'd encourage council to defeat this bylaw change.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi. Counsel Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I can totally empathize with what Counsel Bressi is saying, and I do think it would be nice to have that certainty. Having said that, literally, week by week, we don't know what our next week looks like. And it's not, and it's not when you put your name up to run for council, you have to leave some flexibility in your schedule. If we knew going in when our schedules were met all the time, it would make everybody's life easier. So I know my council meetings are at this time, whether I, in advance, whether it's 6:00 or 3:00. It's the other nine meetings that we never know of. So as much as this might make an impact for that small thing, in the big picture, you have to have a fairly open schedule to run for council. You have to have an employer if you're trying to work with somebody else still at the time. That's very forgiving of your time. It's not a, it's not a position you can run for and kind of know when your schedule's gonna be. It's very adaptable. So I appreciate where you're going with it. I just don't think it would really solve, what you're helping to solve with it. I don't think it would achieve that.
Thanks, Counsel Palat. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment as well. Back in the day, you worked an 8-to-5 shift, or whatever it happened to be. This day and age, there's, people work shifts seven days on, six days off. There's people that work around the clock, depending what job they're in, or what their profession happens to be. And as well as retail, you never know what you're gonna be working in, and those are jobs that the young people are working in right now. So that's not all of them, but to find a perfect time to have a council meeting is just about impossible. So I think this would be, as Counsel Palat had said, this is, we now we know, as in the future, what our days are and our commitments can be. But even like was said, that changes week to week, and sometimes the day before we get a meeting to attend. If we can make it, we do. So this is one of those jobs that has got a lot of restrictions, even for a family life. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just briefly, following Counsel Palat's comments, I agree that this schedule will allow you more opportunity to leave your out-of-council time flexible in the sense that with committee structures being every week potentially, and not knowing whether you're on one or two committees when you choose to run for council, you may end up going to a committee meeting every week. And so having all the committees in one day is great, and I know you support that, Counsel Bressi, but I believe that knowing that from 3 till whatever time that takes, that's your council commitment, and not potentially another committee meeting, I think is a huge asset. And so that consistent schedule is, makes it easier to plan. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on third and final reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we do have the motion around the amended schedule for council and standing committee meetings. Somebody care to make that motion? Counsel Thiessen?
Yeah, it's in the queue here. So I would just move that council approve the amended schedule for council and standing committee meetings for the period May 14, 2019 to October 21, 2019, as presented. Just speaking to this portion of the motion, actually wanted to be with Counsel Bressi on the other side of the motion before, and then I was like, oh, why did I read it? I can't speak against it. But thank you, Counsel Bressi, for speaking on that. This is, this is just a slight blip in the way that council proceeds and operates in our day-to-day life. I will say that, to say that changing the committees and stuff, it's a bit of a shell game. As far as nimbleness goes, it's still gonna be two weeks between every council meeting. So it doesn't matter if they go all in one day, or if they're spread out over two weeks. It's still gonna take two weeks to get there. But I think this is a good change that council discussed at our strategic planning, and one that I can get behind. The council meeting, I was there with you, Counsel Bressi, but this one, it's worth the change. So I would encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Any other discussion and debate? Counsel Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this. We talked about nimbleness, but also, as I said, I really value the public being able to take part and go to committee meetings. I think it's a lot easier for us to be able to tell them, it's every Tuesday, we don't meet at councils when all the committees meet in the morning. So I think this is a step in the right direction for making it successful. So I'll be supporting this for sure.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Bressi. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on the motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take us to item 8.2, the appointment of an alternate to the Grand Spirit Board Foundation. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion on my recommendation to appoint Counsel Thiessen to the Grand Spirit Board as an alternate. This, of course, is in place of Counsel Blackburn, who is away on his medical leave. The Grand Spirit Foundation let us know that they did have some requirement with respect to annual general meeting and some other events, that they needed to have a representative. And so that's what the recommendation is. And I see Counsel Palat as the quickest on the draw and first in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just noticed I haven't done the scorecard for a couple council meetings here. So I'd just like to appoint Counsel Thiessen to the Grand Spirit Foundation as an alternative effective May 6, 2019.
And I think that was May first.
Okay, I just, I thought it was, it made more sense to have it as of today, but I'll put it as May 1, 2019, if that's what administration wants.
I think first and record keeping, we had Counsel Thiessen attend an event. We just wanted to formalize it so that it was by a council appointment. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries. And that takes us to our added agenda item, item 8.3, AquaTerra Directors. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council direct the mayor to vote the city shares in support of the AquaTerra director nominees, as recommended.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. I guess just for the public's information and for councils, this is a bit of a challenging process, given the fact that we're one of four shareholders in AquaTerra, one of three that are in unanimous shareholders agreement. The board of AquaTerra does its director recruitment and then makes recommendations to the shareholders. And those are voted on at an annual general meeting of the AquaTerra shareholders, which is coming up in July, I believe. And so this basically is a direction telling me what to do, even though the names of the directors aren't public at this stage until they're approved at the AGM. And so just in terms of process, this is, creates that paper trail that shows that I'm not just showing up and voting on my own volition at a AquaTerra AGM. Thanks very much for the motion, Counsel Thiessen. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and brings us to committee business, I believe, starting with item 9.1, council committee of the whole from April 22. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Counsel Thiessen?
I would move that council approve the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held Monday, April 22, 2019, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes before we adopt them? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and will take us to item 9.2, the Community Living Committee. And that definitely was Counsel Thiessen.
Yes, this one I've been pre-marked for the announcements of. So I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, April 23, 2019, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Again, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a little bit of business to take care of from our last two Community Living Committee meetings. And the first one from two meetings ago, the Transit System bylaw. And I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1282, being the Transit bylaw. Just speaking to this motion, this came to two Community Living Committee meetings ago, and it's just a set of guidelines and bylaws as to how you would, I guess, behave and give our transit operators and our bylaw personnel, I guess, the long armor of the law, which is the written word that says, you know, you can be removed, and these are your consequences for that. Prior to this, we didn't have any sort of set rules or guidelines attached to our transit, and this is just sort of putting them in place.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. That's a motion for first reading, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1282.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? And seeing nobody ringing in, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Everybody noticed the stress on have. Uh, this is a motion, again, as with our previous, uh, to have third and final reading. It must pass unanimously. Uh, otherwise it will come back at our subsequent council meeting. Any discussion or debate? Vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councilor Thiessen.
And to finish it all off, I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C dash twelve eighty-two being the transit bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councilor Thiessen.
Back to business. All right, this is, uh, in regards to large-scale tourism funding for twenty nineteen. And, uh, I will, I will partition this out, uh, motion by motion, and we'll go from there. So first off, I would move that council approved the allocation of the twenty nineteen large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the Grand Prairie Stomped.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. That motion is open for discussion or debate. Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just wondering, uh, did they get their full amount that they asked for?
Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Um, as far as I recall, uh, there was a seventy-five thousand asked. It was put down to fifty. Uh, that was the graduated, but fif- it was actually not recommended at committee. Uh, the stomped brought forward, uh, a delegation, which spoke to committee. Uh, and committee settled on fifty thousand dollars on the strong merits that it's a, it's a sort of a heritage event that's, uh, been in our community for forty years, has had a very strong draw for tourism, very strong presence for, for Grand Prairie and Northwest Alberta, at least as a tourism draw. Uh, and we thought that, uh, they were very valid and very worthy of, of the amounts that we selected, uh, especially under the guidelines of the large-scale tourism fund. But, uh, as far as the official ask, it was denied and committee went against administration's direction.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would, uh, move the allocation of the twenty nineteen large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to the twenty nineteen Canadian men's and master men's fastball championship.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A question for administration, I know as part of this application, there were some questions at committee in terms of, part of this application is some temporary lights need to be brought into deal, some lighting deficits of the South Bear Creek ball courts. And at the same time, we've got upgrading those lights as part of our long-term capital plan. And we were asking some more questions about would it be cost-effective to move up those improvements now so they don't have to buy temporary lights or should we leave the application as a stand? So I'm just wondering if there's some more context administration can give us.
I'll look to Ms. McGriskin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the Parks Department has, uh, is bringing the, uh, lighting consultant up tomorrow to take a look at the site, take a look at what the requirements are for the, uh, the fastball championship. And then we'll know more details after that.
Thank you. Thanks for that answer. Uh, any other discussion or debate on the recommended funding amount? Councilor Bressi.
Sorry, I'm just thinking out loud as I dig through my committee agenda notes, but I, I'm kind of curious. Part of this was if, like I said, I'm digging through, looking for numbers, but part of this is, I think that we were, uh, twenty thousand dollars is the number I have in my head, but I'm hoping to correction was about what was being spent on temporary lights. And that's almost the full amount of this grant. So I'm kind of curious if we end up upgrading the lights, if we end up moving that capital project forward, what happens to the twenty-five thousand dollars we give them tonight when twenty isn't needed? And I'm kind of looking for, I want to commit this money to them in terms of, I want to say, no matter what, we'll make sure you guys can afford those lights. At the same time, I don't know if I want to write them a twenty-five thousand dollar check if we end up doing a capital improvement that helps, helps it out. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking out loud and looking if council has any ideas or any thoughts in terms of I really support this event, but I'd hate to give away money we don't have to give away because we end up doing that capital improvement early.
I don't see anybody in the queue. Uh, Councilor Thiessen's just come in. I guess, uh, Councilor Bressi, I would say, um, subject to being, uh, finding out more information, uh, from the lighting consultant, um, in my experience, uh, typically city improvement, uh, project, capital projects like that undergo a pretty rigorous planning phase. Um, I would be surprised if it was, uh, sort of the ultimate configuration was able to be planned, uh, designed and implemented in a short period of time. My understanding was that there was a, a make-do solution, uh, was not necessarily temporary lights, but it was some temporary improvements to the fixed lights. Um, I obviously could stand to be corrected by administration, but I just, I, um, my understanding would be that the capital project, uh, would be something that would be a, a little bit longer. And I'm not sure if it'd be able to be delivered prior to the event. I guess that's, that's the short version. Uh, but again, maybe management comes back and says, actually, Mr. Mayor, um, it is something that could be done based on the recommendation of the consultant. I don't know if there's any other comment on that. Uh, Councilor Bressi.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just ponder, I'm just pondering a little bit. I might consider an amendment or amendment or that, but I'm kind of curious. Management, as you've been, so a question from management, has there been conversations with the group in terms of willingness to cooperate with us on a project or willingness to spend this money on the capital project? If we end up doing it, I'm just thinking there might, I respect what you're saying, Mayor Given, but I don't know if that's the case. There might also be opportunity to, one of the questions we asked the committee, is it possible to buy temporary lights that will be movable to the location of the field? So maybe we're not ready to permanently install them, but maybe it's not twenty thousand dollars worth of throwaway costs. I just, I'm trying to think of ways to avoid twenty thousand dollars that's a complete throwaway cost when we're planning to fix this deficit in the next couple of years. So I'm wondering how willing the group has been to work with us and if we, yeah. So just what is the working relationship with the group that we've got going right now?
Ms. McGriskin.
Uh, so Mayor Given, the working relationship is very positive, um, directly with Parks Department, their outdoor infrastructure staff, as well as my staff in the area of community development. So we kind of have three teams that are working with this group very closely. Um, so I'm confident that the group is willing and has expressed interest in working with the city on solutions for the lighting out at, uh, South Bear Creek. And anything that the lighting consultant comes up with, um, they'd be willing to, um, look at what the requirements are to meet the requirements for the, the safety issues on the site. So, yeah, I think, uh, they'd be very willing to work with the city on whatever, whatever other options come forward from the consultant's report.
So, and then I guess kind of a follow-up question, I'm not familiar with where all the different leagues play in Grand Prairie. I guess something that would give me a lot of confidence was knowing that this group had a vested interest in South Bear Creek Park. Is that, does this particular group do a lot of their regular playing tournaments in South Bear Creek Park? Or is this kind of abnormal for them to be running an event in South Bear?
Um, so Mayor Given, um, this specific group is fastball, so that's where the Shale Diamonds are in Grand Prairie. So men's and ladies fastball, um, play at South Bear Creek Park. So they're very invested. They're local business people. They're, um, dedicated sports people in the community as well. So they've been playing for years and they'll no doubt be playing for more years. Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. Any other discussion or debate on the recommended, uh, large-scale tourism funding? Seeing no one in the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen.
All right, last item of business, I would move, uh, that, uh, council allocate, uh, of the twenty nineteen large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Open for discussion or debate on Councilor Thiessen's motion. Councilor Platt.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I'll be supporting this motion, uh, this year for this amount. But, you know, as, as was kind of stated at Living, uh, with the stomped as well as this is something we're looking at. For me, would be trying to reduce some of these to hopefully add more events. So I'll be approving it for this year, but I would hope next year that, you know, for this group that we're, um, looking at maybe possibly reducing it, but for now, that's just to be transparent to the group of where I'd be next year with it. Um, for this year, I'd approve it, but for next year, I'd be wanting to see us try to reduce the amount and, and have them be a little more standalone.
Thanks, Councilor Platt. Councilor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, echoing those comments, I think that, um, it would be unfortunate if council didn't approve the, um, funding tonight with the events being so close around the corner. However, um, it's a very serious consideration for next year going forward for both of the major events, the stomped and Bear Creek Folk Fest. I think, um, that they've both provided great opportunity to our region for a long time. However, I don't think, in my opinion, or I, I, I think in my opinion that, I know in my opinion that it is not, um, my preferred method to continue to fund these to the level we are. I think that, uh, through gift and kind and other opportunities that we've allowed these organizations, they've been successful and they continue to grow, which I think is great. However, um, when an event continues to be successful, sometimes I think that that money could be used for other events. And I think that we need to consider going forward how we strengthen a whole year of events. And, um, so next year, I, I, in my opinion, these events need to be very concerned about, uh, other funding sources. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor O'Toole.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, at this point in time, I will not be supporting this event uh, for the eighty-seven thousand five hundred. Uh, when you work out gift and kind, I think it's still over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I've had a number of people contact me, uh, they say it's a great event, but it's time that, uh, we've given two hundred and sixty thousand dollars so far, not including this much money. Uh, over, this will be the third year, it'll be going on the fourth year. And, uh, they should have maybe done a little bit better. It's hard, and this is a very hard thing to do, is host an event in the outdoors. Last year it was quite cold. I know the numbers were down. I was there. I think it's a great festival, but I, at this point in time, I think, uh, it's, uh, not doing as much for the community as some people feel. Uh, the other event that was mentioned earlier, I think they get more, uh, when they have the stampede, and I'm just going to talk about this, uh, the cowboys are up here. The wagons are up here probably three weeks before the event. It's the first event of the summer, uh, for the stomped, uh, wagons and the rodeo. And so a lot of people are trying to get their horses matched up to the wagons. They're staying in hotels, they're eating at restaurants, they're buying stuff. And, uh, the, the folk festival is, uh, about three days long, four days long, I hear. Uh, and another, had another, another day on each side of that. It's five days. And, uh, I just feel that, uh, my vote, I think it's still going to pass, uh, is I will not be voting for this.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be voting in support of this event. And in my mind, this is what the large-scale tourism event fund exists for. It's to start, it's to help new events get started or to help events significantly expand. And right in our guidelines, we say emphasis will be on events that are five years less or older. Well, this is going into its fourth year, so I did, so I'd encourage council to support it tonight for its year four. And maybe we want to talk about scaling down a little bit next, next year. That's a conversation I'm open to, but I hope we also will give it strong support in year five. And then I think beyond that, we need to have a very hard conversation about what happens for long-term events. But this is an event that had record-breaking numbers last year. I don't think attendance was down. I think it was their, if I'm remembering right, it was their highest, highest year yet. They definitely did the best financially by far. So I think this is an event where it's, I've seen it become self-sustaining in terms of reputation and people coming back again and again and again. But I'm also very optimistic that it's going to become self-staining financially as well. And I think that an event of this scale doesn't, doesn't happen and doesn't become self-sustaining without that initial help. So the way I see that, this isn't an investment in having Bear Creek Folk Fest in twenty nineteen. That's having, this is an investment in having this event in twenty twenty and twenty thirty and hopefully twenty ninety, my grandkids are wheeling in a wheelchair to it. So I hope the council will support this event as we help it become viable for the long term and independent in the long term.
Thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I think in twenty nineteen, in twenty ninety, Councilor Bressi, you'll be volunteering. You won't need to be wheeled down there or just wheeled down to volunteer. I will be, uh, speaking in support of this motion. Uh, in fact, I'm in support of all these events. The fact of the matter is, is, uh, part of council's role is creating a bit of a, a community culture. Uh, I think the large-scale tourism funding helps that in a variety of ways, whether we're helping a forty-year-old event such as the Grand Prairie Stomped, that is a staple of our, our summer season. It's sort of the intro to summer as we go on, uh, to something as we're discussing and debating here with the eighty-seven thousand five hundred for the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival. I'd like to see it get to the same age as, at least as the Edmonton Folk Festival and as a stomped, which is that forty-year time horizon. I do think the organizers have been very responsible with not only how they've built and branded their, their festival, but also in their, their requests over the years. Uh, year one blip, of course, they came in with their hands out, but at this point, uh, they could have asked for a hundred thousand dollars again, and there's money in the kitty, but they're only reducing it, they, but they did reduce it by about twelve thousand five hundred. Um, I could support this and the stomped year over year over year. The purpose of this, though, is to try to create more, uh, events in our community. And with the lack of applications coming through or qualified events coming through, uh, this is sort of what we have, and we should support it because it's local, it's homegrown, and, uh, it's the best thing we can do as far as, uh, setting our community cultural calendar. Uh, just, uh, in, uh, a bit of a juxtaposition, uh, years ago, we spent about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the Scotty Tournament of Hearts to come to Grand Prairie. That was an eight-day event, uh, to date on, on these two events and one new one for twenty-five thousand. We will have spent just over twenty thousand dollars of that amount, and we would have provided our community with twenty-two days of entertainment, uh, over the past four years, not just a one-shot. So this is a year over year over year. So I encourage council to think about that this year and in future years when they vote, uh, because, uh, part of our job is ensuring that people love being in Grand Prairie. And these events, definitely make sure that people love that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, and Councilor Thiessen, I think that handles all the business of community living. Was there any other items that you wanted to highlight for us?
I, I do. Uh, one sec, let me just scroll through here, because, uh, I have, uh, just the director's update. There's some cool stuff in there. Awesome. Uh, yeah, just, uh, just a quick update from, uh, what we got going on. Uh, the city departments are doing, uh, citywide marketing and event planning. Uh, it is currently in development for municipal government day and Canada day celebration, which is going to be an extended celebration this year. I hear it's like five, six days long potentially. Uh, it's going to go crazy and, uh, it's going to be awesome. I know our staff is going to be working around the clock, uh, so that's good to hear that we're tying those events together. Also, I'd like to just again, uh, pat our, our promoters at Revolution Place or management team because they have been named a finalist, one of seven by the Canadian music and broadcast industry for Canada's top venue of less than eight thousand seats, which is incredible. And currently they are at thirty-one point two percent of their target ticket sales for the whole of twenty nineteen. So, uh, right on track there. Uh, for fleets, street sweepers were in use and then we got snowed on. Uh, so, but, uh, I think it's important to note that, uh, there's a full rotation coming on Party One and Two Roads for the rest of the season. And there will be three shifts being around until June and two shifts after that. Uh, and finally, the, uh, the city is working in partnership with Nighthawk for mobile snack concession in the South Bear Creek site. Uh, so that, uh, will hopefully bring a little bit of food and fun and joy to maybe our fastball championships or other softball games that are happening down there at South Bear Creek. But besides that, uh, we did also receive a presentation from the Grand Prairie Regional College to talk about their, um, their wellness center. Uh, so, uh, it was good to get that bit of an update and maybe at some point, council will discuss how we can be further involved in that project. But other than that, uh, that's, uh, what's our committee meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. We'll move on to item nine point three, the corporate services committee meeting. And I think, Councilor O'Toole, that's yours.
Yeah, you're going to hear my voice for a little while here, so we'll, uh, start off with, uh, I recommend council approve the minutes of the corporate services committee meeting held Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty nineteen as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole.
I'm going to start off with nine point three point one, council code of conduct bylaw, C dash thirteen eighty-four. I move the council give first reading a bylaw C dash thirteen eighty-four being the code of conduct for elected officials.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. That's a motion for first reading, so we have no discussion or debate. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole.
I move that, uh, council give second reading to bylaw dash, uh, C- I move that council give second reading to bylaw dash, a C dash thirteen eighty-four.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So this is a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Counsel Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna try a motion, and I'll see if council is, is amenable to it. And I'll make the motion and I'll explain it. And that is, I would move that in sections four point five seven and four point five nine, we strike at their own expense and replace with at the city's expense. And to speak to this, what this refers to is the seeking out of independent legal advice when a councillor may be in risk of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest. And I think in most cases, in every, I've had to excuse myself from a room a couple of times, and it's always been crystal clear that I was in conflict, and I think in most cases it is. But there's a few notable recent cases here in Alberta where it wasn't quite so clear. And I think when it's not clear whether or not a councillor is in conflict, the consequence of making a wrong action is, I think, very extreme. If a councillor thinks that they're, that they are in conflict and they excuse themselves when they weren't in fact, then the people that voted for them are losing that representation, and I think that's not good for our democracy. I think also if a councillor decides they're not in conflict of interest, but later somebody accuses them of being, then A, they might have made a bad vote they shouldn't have made, but also if access issues are leveled and the, and the committee and ultimately council thinks there's something towards that, it starts a process that can be very not nice. I think best-case scenario of that process is a councillor steps down, but then the municipality has to hold a by-election, which costs a lot of money. Worst-case scenario is the councillor fights it, and it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. I think the risk of a councillor getting pecuniary interest or conflict of interest wrong is very, very high to the municipality. And in many ways, I think it's actually a bigger risk to the city than it is the individual councillor. So for that reason, I'd like there to be no barriers to councillors getting legal advice. I think that a good risk management for me is, I'd hate to be penny wise, pound foolish. And to make sure that people are getting good advice when they need it, there's no barriers to that. I hope that council will support this amendment.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. So that motion was specific, and thanks very much, Counsel Bressi, for making it so, so it's easy for council to follow by highlighting four point five seven and four point five nine and, and your deletion of at their own expense. In, in both.
And the addition of at the city's expense. So basically, I'm replacing that.
Okay, oh, to replace with, okay. Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. We discussed this as a committee, and the more I've thought about it, I agree with Counselor Bressi on this one. I think, you know, as earlier, the conversation you're having about, you know, trying to make it more appealing to run for council. This is an area where I think if you're putting your hand up and you're running for council, somebody down the road, it's really nice to know this isn't out of pocket if you're in that. And I think this is diligence on the city's behalf. I don't see it being a big concern. I don't see it's gonna be a big expense to the city. But it has the potential to be a huge expense if it's not done properly. So I, I do think this is a good amendment or a good one to put forward, so I will be supporting it.
Thanks very much, Counsel Palat. Any other discussion or debate? I guess I will. I think, I think I'm gonna debate the, the amendment. In that, I think the intent of just saying at the city's expense may get into a bit of a challenge of, is the, should the city be billed by the independent legal advice? And, or should the council member be submitting that as a legitimate sort of expense of serving on council? So there's a, and I have a suspicion, I don't know this, but I have a suspicion that maybe it matters who you're, who's actually paying. If the council member pays in the first instance and then submits that as a, as an expense, then that would make sense to me that you're, the lawyer is working for the council member, and the council member claims that back from the city. I'm just not a hundred percent sure with the amendment, the way that it's proposed, if that sort of is clear. And that, I think it's up to the council members to engage who they want to engage, to give them that advice. And if we decided as council, then that, that, that is a legitimate and claimable expense for submission to the city, then fair enough. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that what you're proposing precludes, precludes that process, but it also doesn't make that process clear either. So it could just be that maybe we need to amend something else to make that a, an expense that can be submitted. Our acting city manager might have something, and you'll just have, if you go straight to turn your mic on there.
There we go. So I think what we're referring to would be more on the procedural side. And I think that'd probably be the best place to cover that off as opposed to the bylaw specifics.
Okay, yeah, that, that's good advice, that administration could come forward with a recommendation subsequent to this on a procedure for how council members should submit those expenses, or whether it's the city that pays directly and would allow us to investigate that issue. Thank you. Good advice. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would say the reason I worded the amendment as I did, I put in the city's expense, is because that's how, because I read codes of conduct from other municipalities. And I found this, and this is exactly, this would change our bylaw to align with, align with them exactly. There's a few municipalities I could point to. A very notable one is Wood Buffalo, which just had a very, very, very expensive and distracting process because of lack of independent legal advice. And this is the only difference between theirs, their bylaw and how it reads in ours, if this amendment passed, would be their, they say municipality instead of city. But other than that, that's what they put in. Something I did think about, because I saw at city's expense in other codes of conduct, that's why I left that. The other option would be if somebody wanted to move in an amendment, or if I was allowed to make a friendly amendment, I'd be supportive of changing. We could also just leave it silent and just say councillors may seek independent legal advice, comma, continue with the rest of it. It just leave, we could leave the bylaw silent on who pays for it, and then we'd be able to procedurally, procedurally figure that out. But I'd be comfortable with that if that gave more comfort. But I'd, I'd encourage us to give us the ability to go back and create a procedure to let the city manage this risk.
Yeah, I, I think that in a, the effect is probably the same in either of those two solutions. I think maybe the item here might be to refer to administration or request administration develop a procedure for council members to submit expenses, although of this nature. Counsel Clayton.
Can I just ask, the motion be read again?
Sure. So the motion was for second reading, made by Counsel O'Toole, and Counsel Bressi made a motion to amend to reflect a change to item four point five seven, just to replace in the middle of that paragraph, elected officials each have an individual responsibility to seek out independent legal advice from independent legal counsel, comma, at their own expense. And Counsel Bressi is proposing to change that to at the city's expense. And it would continue on with respect to any situation that may result in questions respecting pecuniary interest of an individual elected official. And for, basically proposing the same change to item four point five nine, basically striking the, at their own expense and replacing it with at the city's expense. And five nine speaks to conflict of interest, or four four point five seven speaks to pecuniary interest. So there's two things that say individual council members have to go get their own legal advice. And in both of those instances, Counsel Bressi is recommending that it be at the city's expense. That's the, that's the effect of the amendment Counsel Bressi is proposing. Did I clear it up, or did I make it muddier? Okay, Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I mean, this was discussed at our committee meeting, and there was a recommendation for administration to look into how a city might support councillors on seeking independent legal advice. There was a few other ones that were made at that committee meeting, so I'm just kind of wondering, do we let those run their course, and we make an amendment to this at that point? Are we gonna start amending specific line items? Because if we're worried about that today, then I would want to make amendments on all those as well. And we haven't had a chance for administration to actually come back and give us their direction on those. So I think my preference would be to wait for administration to come back with some, some wording on it, and maybe look at doing an amendment change in several areas, because I think this is one of the areas that I, I would like to see an amendment change. But there's other areas that were discussed, and I'd like to wait till administration has a chance to come back and report. And maybe look at doing this in a couple of council meetings where we make a, a series of amendments, because I don't think this will be the last amendment to this protocol. So.
Yeah, fair enough, Counsel Palat. So there is, you know, Counsel Bressi does have his amendment, and it would be, if you're, I, I guess the advice would be is if council is more comfortable with what's on the page and would like to let the process from committee play out, then you'd vote against Counsel Bressi's amendment, support the main motion, and move forward with it that way. My recollection from committee for council members that weren't there and any that were, feel free to correct me, was that we were sort of observing that there might be other policies or procedures, discretionary spending was one that we, we mentioned that, that could be amended or might be impacted by some of these other changes, not specifically the bylaw. And so that was a part of the discussion, was that there might be other stuff that we wouldn't have to change the bylaw. We could change a policy or procedure somewhere else. And so that, I think that's kind of what, one of the things that Counsel Plats referencing. Is there any other discussion or debate on Counsel Bressi's amendment before I go to him to close on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll go to Counsel Bressi for the close on his amendment.
And just to speak to Counsel Plats' concerns, looking at the outstanding items list from Corporate Services, the other things were tracking of council activity. And I, I thought about delaying this committee, but the reason I decided to bring this amendment up now is because the other things we want to do, if we want to implement those, there's no reason we need to go and change the code of conduct. If we want it, maybe we want to strengthen those processes by, by saying something in the code of conduct, you will follow these processes. Maybe we can do that. Or we can do all those other things we talked about independently of code of conduct. We can't, if the code of conduct explicitly says this will be at a councillor's advice, and we can't provide it at city's expense without coming back and changing the code of conduct. So maybe we want to come open it with those other changes, maybe not. But this is the one change that's certainly the way the code of conduct reads as is, isn't possible.
Thanks for that close, Counsel Bressi. I'll call for the vote on Counsel Bressi's amendment. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And just a comment to administration, I'm not gonna bother making, I was thinking about making a motion to come back with a, back with a policy. I don't think I need to do that, because we've got something similar on the outstanding items list. Something I would encourage administration to come back, though, with is a potential funding source for this. I think council's discretionary allowances might be a very appropriate place for that. But also, I'd encourage administration to look at the City of Victoria, and that's the one I know of where there's caps on how much people can, can, can access. And I think that in our procedure, I don't think that needs to be in our code of conduct. I think in our procedure, those would be good things to talk about. So I hope we'll look at that as they follow the Corporate Services Outstanding Items List.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bressi. So we're back to the main motion for second reading as amended. Is there any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading as amended. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that the council have third reading of bylaw C dash thirteen eighty-four at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. You all heard the stress on have. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can move forward. Counsel O'Toole.
I move that the council give third reading to bylaw C dash thirteen eighty-four, being the code of conduct for elected officials.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel O'Toole.
And I move that we approve policy one twenty-one, that being the council code of conduct's complaints.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. And I think, I think you can do the, the policy and the related procedure at the same time.
Okay, as well as approve the procedure one twenty-one point one.
Okay, thanks very much.
Complaint reporting and investigation process.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that policy and associated procedure? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and there's one last piece of business related to this. Counsel O'Toole.
And I move that we repeal policy one ten, that being the council code of con, code of ethics.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. That's the repeal of the previously standing council code of ethics, just in case there's anybody out there that thought that we didn't have any ethics previously. We did. With this, we're just putting it into a bylaw form rather than into a policy form. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole. Have you got a glass of water over there?
Yeah, I do, and she's about half-full, or you could say it's half-empty. All right, nine point three point two, special recreational tax levy in Pinnacle Ridge bylaw C dash fourteen oh three. The recommendation is, I move the council give reading to bylaw C dash fourteen oh three, being the special recreational services tax bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. That's a motion for first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I move that council give second reading to bylaw C dash fourteen oh three.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Counsel O'Toole.
Good-looking one over here.
His microphone was on a lot, on a lot before there, and so I just naturally assumed, sorry. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I move that council have third reading of bylaw C fourteen oh three at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So this is a motion to have third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
And I move that the council give third reading to bylaw C fourteen oh three, being the special recreational services tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Open for discussion or debate on third and final reading? And seeing nobody ring in, I would just note that this is a annual special tax that we have essentially to fund the operation and maintenance of the special water features at the entry to Pinnacle Ridge and in the Pinnacle Ridge wet pond for the, for the fountain there. This is something the city of Grand Prairie has done for a number of years at the request of the residents in that area, and this was duly advertised and circulated through the Neighborhood Association in that area as well. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Looking for one more. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
The last of this segment. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C dash fourteen oh two, being the twenty nineteen property tax bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. That's a motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole.
I also move that we give second reading to bylaw C dash fourteen oh two.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Motion for second reading is open for discussion and debate. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will, if this motion passes, I will be voting to have third reading tonight, but I can't support second or third reading for this. And the reason is I couldn't support the budget when we voted on, on it either. And just so you know, usually other years, I know I'm never gonna get a budget that I'm a hundred percent happy with, and I think that's actually one of the good things about democracy and representative democracy. And usually, I plan to go along to get along and vote for, yes, the budget, vote yes, the property tax bill, even if it's not exactly like I want. But in this case, I've got a very, very strong and a, and a principle-based objection to this tax levy. And what that is, is part of the reason that we're achieving a tax reduction is because of the refinancing of debt. And as I've shared before, I just don't support paying more in debt servicing long-term for a temporary reduction in taxes. I think refinancing is an opportunity that we're squandering. I think that the cash flow we freed up with that could be used for something that will permanently make this community better. I don't think this is it. I'm also concerned, looking at the Corporate Services Committee meeting for tomorrow, right now, there's a projected one point one million dollar deficit we're coming to this year. And that's less than one percent of the budget. I'm pretty confident that management will find efficiencies and not deliver that, but you never know. And part of the reason that we refinanced was because when we borrowed from reserves, we were planning to pay some of that money back pretty aggressively. Well, with that budget projections, we might not be able to do that, and that gives even less hesitancy to this. So I think we're being too aggressive with this, and I cannot support this property tax bill because of that debt management. I love everything else we're doing to reduce taxes, but that I just can't get behind, so I'll be voting no.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Don't see anybody in the queue. That being the case, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that council have third reading of bylaw C fourteen oh two at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So motion to have third and final reading. Appreciate Counsel Bressi, you stating your intention to allow this to move forward to a vote in third, third reading. Was there any other discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? Was there any other discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor O'Toole.
And I move that council give third reading to bylaw C fourteen oh two. Being the twenty nineteen property tax bylaw.
Hey, thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor O'Toole, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, or did we cover absolutely everything?
Well, we were there quite a while and we got a lot covered, I'll give you a director service area. Ms Walker discussed a number of items that her and her crew are working on. Of course, we just talked about the assessment and taxation, assessors are preparing for re inspections. Corporate facility management administration is preparing for construction completion of the Bear Creek outdoor pool. And a request for proposal is currently being finalized for the facility condition index assessment. The curling club cooling floor replacement project has been awarded and work is commencing. And there is some landscape deficiencies around the Montrose concourse that will be addressed. And the second annual facility management conference will be held in Grand Prairie this year. Invitations were sent out to thirteen different Alberta municipalities. Under finance, the first quarter has now closed, administration is preparing a report for the May seventh committee meeting. That includes small housekeeping items are being looked at at the city auditors in order to finalize the FIR for submissions to the municipal affairs. Human resources, QP and IF I AFF bargaining is still ongoing. And the used to have the human resources department in the city hall here. They have now moved their offices down to city on ninety ninth. And ITS, Perfect Mind Software implementation is going well. And the vendor is on site this last week for subject material or subject matter expert training, sorry about that. And procurement gov deals is very active, forty-seven items are sold since January, including eight retired fleet vehicles. That were an average eight of age of fifteen years old, total sales are sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And we have a number of competitive bids. And contracts has been reduced to a maximum of ten days from the average of forty-eight days. So talk about administration doing some hardcore work there. And we did talk about the council court of conduct, which we just passed a bunch of bylaws there. And the other stuff that we had already made the motions on, so thank you very much, and thank you very much for the hard work and the. Corporate services department.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, we'll move on to pursuit of excellence committee and we will go to. No, good, he needed a break.
I just had a drink of water, I'm good now.
Thanks, Mayor Given, I would move that council approve the minutes of the pursuit of excellence committee meeting held Wednesday, April twenty fourth as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Clayton, do you have anything that you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Just a couple of quick things, there was a delegation there at the meeting from Grand Prairie Regional College. A similar delegation or the same delegation that was at Community Living regarding a proposed design for a regional sport and wellness center. And they're looking for support from the provincial government as well as the local levels of municipal government. In addition, that meeting, we started with approximately thirty-three thousand dollars heading into the meeting. Throughout the process of the meeting, we funded various athletes either through travel or for athlete development. I don't think there's any coach development that day, but regardless, we funded athletes in various sports, including gymnastics. Judo, rock climbing, volleyball, soccer and and wrestling. It that meeting, we were able to fund athletes approximately ten thousand dollars, which will leave the. Rest of the available funds for the meeting, you know, for the remainder of the meetings throughout the year. The only comment I would have is that if you know athletes, coaches in the in the prescribed region that are eligible for pursuit of excellence funding. I strongly encourage them to apply, there's an opportunity sometimes where it within our regions where coaches can't necessarily. Afford to take time off work and may possibly need support to get to course develop coach developments, so we can grow coaches in the region. As well, any support for travel is always helpful, so if you know athletes, please encourage them go on the city of Grand Prairie website. The information is there, and if not, there is great information internally within our administration, so. If you know these athletes, I encourage them to apply, thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, that'll take us to item nine point five councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I would move the council approve the minutes, the council committee of the whole meeting held Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. I think I'm looking for one more, thank you council, that motion carries. We'll move on to councillor Bressi, you have something you want to cover from that?
Yeah, well, as council will know, that committee of the whole was to talk about our fees and charges by law, which committee is recommending to council, but it comes with. A whack load of other bylaws that need to get approved, so it's gonna be a very long tedious tedious meeting to do that in the future. That being said, there, this might be a little bit unusual, but I've got something, I was thinking about that since that meeting, that I'm hoping to make a follow up motion for business arising if. The chair would permit me to.
Certainly try it, if this was something that you were thinking about ahead of time, might have been helpful for us to know ahead of time, so we could put it on the agenda and others could have a chance to think about it. That being the case, it arises out of the minutes and by all means.
Well, as I was, as I was looking at this, it it occurs to me that. There's very few fees in here that operate at a cost recovery ratio, there are a lot of fees here that are being subsidized by. By taxpayers, which I think is great for city residents, but there's a lot of services here that get access by non-city residents for a lot of services. City residents are subsidizing people from across the region to access our services. And I don't think that's good, I don't think that's right, I think that right now we are working on negotiations, see if we can get. Regional and other municipal participation in a lot of these services, and if those goes well, that's great, I think ideally. Other municipalities would participate in delivering these services. That being said, if other municipalities are unwilling to do that, or we can't figure out how to make that happen with them. And I don't think it should go on that city residents are subsidizing all these services for non-city residents. It creates obvious issues with us as a city of Grand Prairie, this is a big reason why we pay more than other taxpayers in the region. So it creates issues for us as a corporation, I also think it's fundamentally unjust, I was on Stats Canada this weekend. Compared us to the surrounding area around us, and our household income is median household income is only eighty-five percent of the median household income of the area around us. Look at proportion of residents, we have proportionately, we have one and a half times more lone parent families. We have one and a half times more, again proportionally, people who identify as Aboriginal. We've got two times as many proportionately low income families, two times as many immigrants, three and a half times as many renters versus homeowners. And we've got six times as many proportionately, again, visible minorities, I think it's fundamentally unjust that these groups are subsidizing. Or privileged groups that live that live around us, and eventually. I think we need to have the conversation about, do we charge different fees to city residents who are subsidizing these services? And to and a higher fee to people who aren't subsidizing these services to their tax sellers. I don't think now's the time to do that, but when we review fees and charges in twenty in twenty twenty, I'd like us to have the ability to do that. So I've got some information that I'm hoping that council supports sending out administration to gather over the next few months. That would set us up for a good conversation in the fall, should we have to have it. I have talked to the directors affected, and I've been told that the work on this is very doable and very minimal. And I think that this motion, if it passes, it will help us have a good conversation in the fall if we need to have it. So what that motion is, is I would move that we direct administration to in the fall, report to the appropriate standing committees. The full annual subsidy, including cost of debt used to operate the East Link Center. And the number of East Link Center membership holders who reside in the city, the county and other municipalities. And for all park use permits submitted from June to September, how many contact people were city residents? How many are county residents and how many were residents of other municipalities? And for all criminal record check checks processed, how many applicants were city residents? How many are county residents and how many were residents of other municipalities? So that's my motion, and basically what I'm asking is, hey, administration, when we review our budget in the fall. Could we know for criminal record checks for people that are applying to you for a park use permit and for people that are members of the East Link Center? How many of them live in the city, how many live in the county, how many live in other municipalities, and that hopefully will allow us to have a. Intelligent discussion about differential rates if we choose to do so.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi, and a fair bit of detail there, and so council obviously open for discussion and debate, but. In essence, it's setting an information request to admin administration and council directing that information request. So we can start to gather some data on those points, it's not at this stage making any presupposing any decisions on those yet. But essentially council asking to have the data available for us to be able to consider it at a point in the future. Fair enough, okay, any discussion or debate on the motion? Don't see anybody in the queue, then I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I think that handles all the business coming out of that council committee of the whole meeting. And we'll move on to infrastructure and protective services, and I think councillor Bressi, we're gonna handle that, I think councillor Friesen chaired, she was the acting chair for that committee. And we had a bit of a short bench, but I appreciate that you also stood in as a temporary appointee to the committee, so I think you're it for today.
Yeah, I was also the chair for two minutes. I would move the council approve the minutes, the obstruction protective services committee meeting held Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen as presented.
Hey, thanks very much councillor Bressi, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. That motion carries councillor Bressi.
Great, and then I would also move that council requests up to eight hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars from provincial affordable housing grant funding for the purchase of land. And just to speak to this Habitat for Humanity has approached us, they've they're hoping to do a project here in the city of Grand Prairie. My understanding is they've secured some pretty significant philanthropic commitments that I won't share the details now, because that's for other groups to share. But they have received commitments to make a project happen here in Grand Prairie, they're looking for land, they've asked for the city to to help them find that land. There are some lots available for sale, there's also some money under provincial affordable housing grants, that's. My understanding is that's allocated towards the city, and we're getting asked to please find a use for that soon. And so this this would ask the province to pretty please, can we use this money for this project? And if the province says yes, then at a future date, we'd be coming back to vote on the actual purchase of the purchase of the land. So this isn't tying our hands to anything right now, it's just saying, hey, province, can we make this decision if we decide to in the future?
Excellent, thanks very much councillor Bressi, any discussion or debate? The only other bit of context I'd provide is that this, the amount isn't specific to the lots. It is actually a request for the province to allow us to use that amount towards the purchase of land for affordable housing projects. And this amount, I think is estimated to be able to provide for more than would be necessary just for the. Proposed Habitat for Humanity, so it isn't that this is the amount of money that we have to spend for land for Habitat for Humanity. It is for affordable housing projects overall. Don't see anybody else in the queue, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. That motion carries councillor Bressi, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Two other things worth hi- worth highlighting out of that out of those minutes is, first of all, I know street sweeping is a hot topic right now, although given the snow we had over the weekend. Maybe not as hot topic as it should be, but something I'll point council and the public out to is there's a very helpful schedule online now of weekly. Street sweeping routes, which I was excited to see, and I think they'll be very helpful for people figuring out whether they need to move their car car or not, so that's worth checking out. The other thing I'd highlight that committee do is it authorized the terms of references for a review of the College Park area redevelopment plan. And basically what's been happening in that neighborhood is people have been having prob- economic problems with current rules redeveloping that neighborhood. And part of that, part of that is because of some restrictive things going on in that ARP, and so. For that and a few other reasons, to make sure that we're allowing intensification in that area when it's appropriate. Management would like to work with the community to figure out what are the next steps for that area. Something worth noting is the original ARP covered up just the privately. North of a hundredth avenue, it covered just the privately held held lots lots over there. And the original ARP also include a strip of commercial south of a hundredth avenue. Committee changed the scope for the upcoming review to include nothing south of a hundredth avenue. And north of a hundredth avenue to include not just the privately held lots there, but also the college owned apartments that are to the north of there. And the college owned ball dimens and other land that's just the south of College Park, so saying we're gonna stick on this side of a hundredth avenue, but include the college line in this review as well.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi, I have director of infrastructure and economic development, Mr Bobin.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I just want to correct one piece of information that was given to committee. Prior to them voting on removing the or the area south of one hundredth avenue. Administration said that it was part of the high visibility corridor, it is not part of the high visibility corridor. The high visibility corridor ends to the west at one hundred and eighth street.
Thanks very much for that clarification. That may be something that council would want to consider, whether or not we'd want to extend that corridor in further that for council con. Context, that was a part of the discussion of the committee, was that the Highville's visibility corridor handled designing control standards over that area and appreciate the clarification. That what we heard at committee was incorrect, that it does not, so certainly that's something in the future we wish to, we could address. I don't see anything else arising out of that committee, and so we'll move on to nine point seven, and councillor O'Toole, are you back on again? To get it right this time?
You betcha, I've got a drink of water in me and I'm ready to go, good deep breath inside me, I'm ready to go. I move the council approve the minutes of the arts development committee meeting held Wednesday, May first, two thousand nineteen as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor O'Toole.
So we started out with seven thousand dollars, we funded a number of different areas of art. And we have a little bit of money left in for our fall. Fall meeting where we may hand out some more money to depending on the art and the project. I've got none, one more here, it's nine point seven point one, the public arts reserve funding. I move the council fund fifteen thousand dollars to the Snowbird Eight memorial project for the public arts reserve. And I can just speak of that, it was about forty years ago this last week that an aircraft from the Snowbirds. Disintegrated in the air due to structural failure and. It was not a good day for the airport and the airshow that particular year. I was extremely close to the event as the fuel tank on the Snowbird landed probably less than fifty feet from me. It was on Dave Lawheed's property, and that's where the plane actually. Disintegrated over, and there's a number of individuals in the peace country that would like to. Develop a memorial project at the airport and looking for some contribution from the city. And this would be the fifteen thousand dollars, so. But I understand they've got a lot of contributions from private people, private agencies from outside the area of Grand Prairie as well.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I think that handles all of our committee business. We had no items correspondence this evening, and we did have one delegation with respect to an item that was dealt with later on in our agenda, so maybe we could just have a motion to receive. Presentation for information councillor Thieson.
So moved Mr Mayor.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Thieson, any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, we had no notices of motion this evening, and that would take us to council member reports, I think councillor Thieson, he had a couple for us, the Grand Prairie Youth Council and the Grand Spirit Foundation.
My goodness, Mayor Given, that's like more than halfway down the page, so maybe I'm the only one, I'm not sure, but. I'll speak to the Grand Prairie Youth Council first and foremost, we met last week on Tuesday, oh, sorry, Wednesday. And part of that was. and foremost. We met last week on Tuesday. Oh, sorry, Wednesday. And part of that was largely discussion around the youth engagement awards, which are happening right now as we speak, just across the street at the Teresa Sergeant Hall. So hopefully they're having a good time with the youth, being entertained by the youth, and also giving out awards from the youth to businesses and people in the community who have supported our youth. We also discussed membership of the youth council and a recruitment drive, as well as the soon to come out in the fall, Youth Mental Health Book and Guide. So those are all parts of the discussion that we had. The final part of the discussion is they're still looking for someone to administration to lead them up on a full-time basis. So the youth were tasked with giving some suggestions as to the type of personalities they might want to work with in the future. So that was interesting discussion to be a part of. That will definitely be weighted. Obviously, our administration has greater weighting, but I thought it was very appreciative and the youth were appreciative of the fact that they were asked as to what type of people they'd like to work with around it. And so really is just simple stuff like relatable people and people who aren't set in ways or ideologues. So it was pretty cool and a great discussion. I was happy to be a part of it and I hope to have a great event tonight. Then I guess I can move on to Grand Spirit Foundation, since it's right underneath. I had my first meeting with the Grand Spirit Foundation like today in discussion with their about their regional housing needs assessment. So we spoke with the consultant and the main members of the executive team there with counselors from around the region. And they brought me up to date as to what the scope of the project is in the regional housing needs assessment. I did bring up the fact that the cities had done undertaken their own housing needs assessment, and they were well aware of that. They're working very closely with Reed DeRoche with our in community social development. So I was trying to figure out where he's working now, but that's where he's stationed. And really using a lot of his data for city stuff and then expanding the scope into the greater region. From that point forward, it was a bit of an orientation for yours truly, as I'm taking over for Clyde. Hi, Clyde. I know Clyde's watching. Actually, I've been sending him texts back and forth. So hi, Clyde. Glad to have you as part of council. Glad to be filling in your big shoes on Grand Spirit. I got my full orientation and I am excited. They did have one suggestion, though, in discussion that's sort of offline, but I'll bring it up here because it does relate to all of council. When we undertook our our goal of seeking out the potential for municipal housing corporation, I sort of took them by surprise. They weren't made aware that we're doing that. And so they were left to their own devices as to imagining how we would do that. And if we were entering into a competitive sphere, I know we've had that talk with about industry, but being the main housing body for our region, Grand Spirit made a big bigger request that if we're going to undertake such things, they'd like to be as informed as possible. So I said between Clyde and myself and the rest of council, I'm sure we could do that. And we weren't looking to step on anybody's toes and looking to actually strengthen our ability to provide housing within our city and within our region. So look forward to future meetings. And yeah, until then, that is my update for now.
Thanks very much for those two updates. Counselor Thieson, did anybody else have any reports from external boards or committees I asked around, just in case there's any that we missed? Seeing none, then we'll go to council member roundtable and we'll start with Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Couple of events. And the first one I'll highlight, I won't get into too much detail, was the RCMP dinner last Friday. There was a few counselors there, so I'm sure one of them would like to speak to it because there was two of them here that were part of the presentation. Other than that, I had several coffee meetings with some builders and developers regarding our Housing Corp. And I guess the three words I want to use for the summary of those three coffee meetings were curious, concerned, and very frustrated. And I think that, you know, I'm excited about us getting this going. But I'm also wanting to point out, and I know one of them's watching tonight, so I wanted to throw that out, that it is something that I'm concerned about that at some point, I'm sure hoping we're gonna start having more conversations with that because I still feel like we're missing that. So anyways, it was it was nice to see that there's there's people paying attention to what we're doing. And hopefully we'll get more conversations about that, the Housing Corp., because there's a lot of curiosity, concern, and frustration in the community building around that with the development and building side.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plott. Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just wanted to thank council for stepping in while I was away. I had an opportunity to travel to Alaska last week for work. I can say that it was warmer than here. So that was a nice little break. However, it it was a great opportunity to see the tourism activities from another nation. So thank you for that opportunity and thanks everyone for filling in while I was gone.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got a number of items to highlight. I attended the annual day of mourning. I actually read the proclamation on behalf of you. It's noted that on an average, there's three people a day die because of either industrial diseases or incidents where they were killed on site. And so I actually also walked in the steps for life on the fourth this last Saturday, and they highlighted that as well. So that was one proclamation reading. As I moved down, I got up very early on the second and attended the grand opening of the new Canadian Tire. And they announced it as the largest Canadian Tire in the world. Single floor Canadian Tire. There's a hundred thousand square feet of retail space and fifty-seven thousand square feet of storage. And they're still using the old Canadian Tire building for storage until they don't need it anymore, I take it. But they did double their staff by the by the by the new store. I also attended the regional jump Grand Prairie Regional Tourism AGM gala. And I filled in for Clyde Black, which was unable to make it. And there was lots of questions about Clyde. And I said he's got her under control. He's just in Edmonton right now. And we're sure to see him back at the seat here in surely soon time. And also, I attended the RCMP dining and dinner as I gave greetings on behalf of you, Mayor Given, which you were unable to make. And just to give people an understanding on why the mayor couldn't make this event, we have over sixty-five hundred requests every year to attend things. And you can't clone yourself. So you get some council members that will take you up on that. So it was a great event. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. And I would say that we've got a great team that's totally capable of doing that. Certainly appreciate everybody stepping in to cover those sixty-five hundred events. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think we should start trying to make the community think you've got eight clones when we fill in for you. I don't know what that would look like, but I'm scheming. Two, two things that were a highlight for me was today, along with Mayor Given, Counselors O'Toole, and Counselor Thieson, I got to attend the Grand Prairie launch of the of one line, which is for survivors of sexual assault. And now there's one number across the province that people can either call or text. And the promises if they do or call or text is that they will be believed, that they will not be judged, and that they will be connected with specialized help to help them move on and to help them heal. And so that number is one eight six six four oh three eight thousand. And it is a great service that is now available across our province. So that was great to see. I think another highlight for me was I went to the Chamber of Commerce Business Showcase, and I didn't end up actually end up going to talk to too many businesses because I got stuck at one booth for Safer Alberta Roads, which was a group I hadn't heard about by before. But it's an industry-led group that's been active largely in Fort McMurray, also a little bit in Calgary. And now they're just starting activities here in Alberta. And they exist for two reasons. One is public education, and the second is government advocacy. And they're in Grand Prairie right now raising awareness about the impacts of impaired driving, fatigue driving, all the things we do that are dangerous. But also, they're doing their best to get in front of the new ministers and the new premier to start sharing their priorities across the province to make a road safer. And Highway forty being twinned along with us as quickly and as well as possible is a very high priority for them. So I think that's a great group that to hear about that I think will be good partners for us as we work to advocate for the province for our infrastructure needs up here.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Counselor O'Toole, there was something that you missed from your list?
Yeah, I have a lot of papers here. I did a lot of reading today, and I kind of missed this. It's important. The River of Death and Discovery Dinosaur Museum Society will hold its annual general meeting on Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen, at six o'clock at the Ackroyd Family Theater at the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum. And all society members in good standing are invited to attend to participate in the growing Alberta's newest dinosaur museum. Members may nominate themselves or others as members to the board, either at the meeting or advance by contacting the board with a resume and cover letter and indicate why the nomination would benefit the board. Lapsed time memberships can be renewed in advance the day at the museum at the front desk. And thank you for that. And if you do attend the meeting, the new executive director, Lyndon Roberts, will be there. And you can welcome her to the region. And she's decided to move up here permanently at this point in time. So she's here. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, for the update from the museum. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Counselor Bressi said earlier about Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It is for the whole month of May. It's part of the reason why I'm wearing all purple today. I seem to go with the theme, just dressing up for pace. But that that one line is not just for women, which are probably the largest assaulted that we know of, but it's for men as well, who are probably the largest demographic that is assaulted and never talk about it. So that's that's open for men and women and all victims of sexual assault. I'd just like to touch on two items, and then I'm gonna send you guys off to work somewhere. May second, I was honored to be a part of the Heritage Fair as the emcee and as one of the judges. The judge package that I was handed out was to adjudicate a student's presentation or two students' presentation on the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, which is really cool because the day before I was actually in discussion with the RCMP. And they gave me the whole script for the next day's regimental dinner, which is great because it was loaded with history and stuff. So I was as well armed to like be real mean to these kids, but they actually knew their stuff. So then because I knew my stuff and they knew their stuff, I was able to grade them very high. But it was a great presentation. A bit of a smaller turnout this year, I must admit. But, you know, with a lot of events, there's ebbs and flows. And there's a lot of changeover in the education system from what I heard and teachers moving around. But they expect growth. And already, I've heard reports back that teachers are already requesting to be a part of it and have the whole classes come in, including as far away as Valhalla, which is great to hear. And anytime we can celebrate any aspect of our history in Canadianna, I think we should undertake it. It's a worthwhile exercise. And thank you very much to the people at Teresa Sergeant Hall for making it very easy for the organizers to run and operate that event. I heard nothing but glowing reviews. So great job, team at Teresa Sergeant Hall and the Montrose Cultural Center. Then on May third, I was given the honor of actually, I don't know how I got this, but being the keynote speaker at the regimental dinner for the RCMP with friends and family all associated with that is a great one. I hope I entertained. I wasn't quite sure what I was getting into. I wasn't really given a script or a theme, so I just went with it. And so I I said, thanks for teaching me how to be me to the RCMP. And I just brought up a bunch of virtues that spelt out my name. And I said, this is what you guys have taught me every time I escaped the long arm of the law. But anyways, it was good. I thought it was fun. I did leave that event feeling really, really good because not only did they super introduce me, which normally I'm super introducing people, but I was actually quite humbled by the experience. But I did leave with something on the table, and I want to make up for that here tonight. Superintendent Don McKenna, who was the person who asked me, along with Jackie Doucette, to be a part of that dinner and to be the keynote speaker. This is probably his last regimental dinner. And I wanted to thank him for the for the decades of service that he's given to the RCMP and for the years of service that he's done for our local community. Don definitely follows the crisp principles of my election. He's carrying honest, resourceful, intelligent service that he carries through on a day-to-day basis. And I really like the guy. I've got to know him really well, sitting as a board member with him on the John Howard Society. I've seen his work in action as far as fighting crime and drug units and how to organize the RCMP and keep morale high. I think it's a it's a big loss for for leadership in RCMP. I know there'll be someone there to step in and fill up that void. But I just want to wish Don and his family all the best going forward in your retirement up in, I think it's Northern Manitoba. I don't know why he'd go that far away and hide out in the woods. But all the best in your retirement, Don, and thanks again for giving us so many great years of service on our force.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Sure. Counselor Thieson, you had one more?
Yes, I've pulled a card from my Kevin O'Toole bag of tricks. No, nothing that I've done, but something I can't be a part of. I wanted to be a part of last week, but it got canceled due to snow. The scrub and grub is happening this Friday. I hope while I'm not in town, all of my council peers and friends will be there helping our city administration pick up the trash and make our city as green and beautiful as possibly it could be. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. I'll just cover a couple of events that either haven't been covered or that I was the only council attendee at. Last week, I had the opportunity to welcome a group of patrollers from the AMA School Crosswalk Patrol to City Hall. This is an annual event that recognized the patroller of the month. And it's a it's a real honor to be able to do that. First off, because the kids are so excited about the opportunity comes to City Hall, I think they like getting to sit in all of your chairs, by the way. And so it's possible that there are some future council members there. But also because the AMA School Patrol is such a valuable program, giving kids some first taste of responsibility and working in their school community. But also because there has never been fatality at an AMA patrol, school patroller, patrol crosswalk in the seventy-five-plus year history of the program. And so I think it really speaks volumes about how kids can actually take a really hands-on role in in making the world a better place from a very, very early age. Also, last week, I was in Edmonton for a regular AUMA board meeting. And on Sunday of last week, I and some other members of council had the opportunity to participate in a fundraiser for the Imagination Library. It is a project that seeks to bring raise funds so that youth in Grand Prairie before school age actually receive a free book, free books, actually, through the course of a year. If anybody is interested in helping support this event, I have a great opportunity for you to do that. You could come and watch the finals of Grand Prairie's Smartest Person next Monday night. We don't have it, works out well that we don't have a council meeting. So all of you could come and attend and watch me be not probably one of the top ten smartest people in Grand Prairie. I'm sure I did make the top ten, and I'm sure I will be out. The way I see it, there's no good outcome for me as mayor unless I'm the smartest person in Grand Prairie. Coming in number two doesn't cut it in that. But you're more than welcome to come and support Destination, sorry, Imagination Library next week, next Monday night, as they raise funds for to provide youth in our community with books. And with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned.